Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the January 15, 2025 regular meeting of the Kenai City Council to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening and ask that if you're able to please rise me and rise and join me in the national, or the national.
............................................................................................................
Clerk, please call her on.
Councilmember Dothitt.
Here.
Councilmember Askin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nexted.
Here.
Councilmember Daniel.
Here.
Councilmember Sonar.
Here.
Mayor Gabriel.
Here.
Councilmember Cassena.
Here.
You have a quorum. Oh, I'm sorry, Student Representative Tanner.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Counsel, before we get to our approval of agenda and consent agenda, I'd like to call your attention to a laydown that you should have in front of you with requests and additions to the packet. Action, add to item E6, Resolution Number 2025-04, public comment. This was requested by the city clerk, and then add to item K.1, City Management Report, Finance Mid-Monday Report Attachment requested by the city clerk. Pleasure, counsel. Vice Mayor Nexted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval, approval of the agenda and consent agenda, along with add item E6 and K1, requesting unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Is there anybody that would like to amend the general consent agenda this time? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of December 18, 2024, brought to you by the city clerk. New business action approval, bills to be ratified. Action approval, non-objection to the renewal of a club liquor license for Kenai Elks Lodge #2454, doing business as Kenai Elks Lodge #2425. License #5644, brought to you by the city clerk. Action approval, non-objection to the renewal of a restaurant eating place liquor license. Jersey Subs Alaska LLC, doing business as Jersey Subs. License #5900, brought to you by the city clerk. Action approval, council confirmation of mayoral nomination of Dominic Sarte to the Harbor Commission, brought to you by Mayor Gabriel. Action approval, council confirmation of mayoral nomination of Marty Pepper and Bridget Grime to the Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Commission, brought to you by Mayor Gabriel, and introduction of ordinance #3448, 2025, amending Kenai Municipal Code Section 14.22.010, land use table, to allow airport as a principal permitted use in the airport light industrial zone, brought to you by the administration. Public hearing scheduled for February 5, 2025, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to any item on the consent agenda which was just read into the record? Anybody online? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to counsel. You know, consent is requested for approval. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. That brings us to item B, scheduled administrative reports, where we have the Kenai Tourism and Marketing Report with Inger Didi and John Papendick from Agnew Beck Consulting. You have the floor.
Think I'm on? Okay. Thanks. Thanks for pulling that up. Thanks, everybody, for your time today. I'm here with my coworker, John, and as introduced, my name is Inger. And we're here to give you a brief overview of where we started, what we're doing, and where we're going with the City of Kenai Tourism and marketing efforts. So, our presentation today is going to be about 15 slides long, and then we'd like to leave some time at the end to take your questions. Okay, am I doing this right? Oh, there we go. Okay. First, I just wanted to give a quick introduction, a little bit about us and our, the company we work for. We're part of a multi-disciplinary team at Agnew Beck Consulting, and we work with a team of trained designers and communicators. And I think what makes us most unique is that we're versed in best practices that are applied, that can be applied nationally. But we understand that Alaska is really unique, and we work with our clients to really listen to what they need in their specific community. Sorry, getting the hang of this clicker. There we go. We, Agnew Beck originated in Alaska and has offices now in Idaho and California as well. John and I live in Soldatna and manage a small office in Soldatna, and we're personally very invested in life in this area, and we connect with activities in Kenai on a weekly basis. This is all just to say that this work really matters to us, and we understand what is challenging and what is uniquely awesome about living in this area. So, I'd like to give you an overview of the project background, kind of where we started and where we're going. So, the main objectives that we have listed here are objectives based on the RFP that we got for this project, and then also what we've determined in working with the project team. So, the main objectives are to promote Kenai as a year-round destination, to increase tourism, and to engage and inspire residents. And we're also focused on workforce recruitment and retention and economic development in the community. And I also wanted to just take this little moment to give a quick reminder about the timeline for the work that we're doing. We started this work in the summer of 2024, and there's an option to extend this particular contract for two successive one-year terms, which would extend the work through the summer of 2027. And the budget for this work is $35,000, which includes the promotional expenses. So, where, what did we start with when we started this project, which is important for us to pause and think about for a minute, because we felt like we started with some very solid tools in place, including an established brand. And from our perspective, this was a really good foundation, because it allowed us to start from a position of thinking about how those products are working and how we can work to improve and adapt them. So, that's, that was a good position for us to be in, starting as designers. We started, and I think you all know this, but just a quick recap for everyone that's, might be listening in. The products that we started with were the City of the, of Kenai logo, which also had a branding and style guide. And there's also the I Love Kenai brand website and social media accounts that are in place. And then you guys also have some marketing materials, like a wealth of photos, blog posts, and social media content. So, as we dug in and we started this work, what did we hear? We've met with department leaders, the Kenai Chamber, and we hold regular meetings with Terry and Christine. And we've also spoken with residents, the Kenai Peninsula Borough, and also chambers across the borough. We've heard about some of the challenges with the current brand, and out of these conversations, our main takeaways are that we need to refine the materials to speak with an authentic, locally knowledgeable voice. We need to accurately describe what is available to do and to see when you're in Kenai. So, as you can see here on the slide, the previous marketing efforts, such as they are, set really high expectations. They, there's a strong desire to focus on authenticity in the materials that we create. And we also heard that the I Love Kenai brand was not found to really resonate in particular with locals or tourists. And we heard that the tagline that's currently in place, the Best Place to Alaska, needs stronger support to make its message really resonate for regional audiences. So, I'll go into all that a little bit more as we go on here. So, now I'd like to shift to an update about our current progress. So, what did we change as we started working on this? So, we've made a shift in the language that we're using to talk about Kenai. We, we really love the use, you can see the, on the top there, that the slogan, "The Best Place to Alaska," that's the current tagline. We really love the use of Alaska as an action word. I think that's really cool. But we've expanded the original, "The Best Place to Alaska" tagline to include phrases like, "This is how we Alaska," "This is where I Alaska," and "This is my Alaska." We did this because it resonates better with regional tourists. For regional visitors that come from places all over Alaska, they each have individual reasons why the place they live is the best place for them in particular, right? And I think we all know that, that there's a variety of reasons why you would pick to live in a certain place in Alaska. So, what we want to do is show visitors, and also people that live here, but visitors in particular, we want to show them why the people of Kenai choose to live and play here. And we've heard people say, "Kenai is where I choose to live for a variety of really good reasons," which include the natural beauty, proximity to outdoor recreation and access to the rest of Alaska, the fact that it's a hub community with the airport, jobs, infrastructure, and resources. It's a town with cultural heritage and history. It, it has a small-town charm, and it's a good place to raise children, and it has a vibrant arts and culture scene. So, we want to ensure that locals believe in the branding and feel like it really tells their story. And we want to shift the stories to be from real people who live here, talking about why they choose to be here. And we believe that if locals can really articulate why this is the best place to Alaska, visitors will also agree that Kenai is a place to visit and hopefully a place to come back to. The change, this change that we've made in the way we talk about Kenai allows locals to describe their experience living in Kenai authentically. So, in the next slide, I'm going to show you an example of how we made that shift, or how we're making that shift. So, in this slide, you can see, this is a picture of the, this is a screenshot of the I Love Kenai website. And we feel like it's a good design with appealing images and with robust content. However, the team identified some areas for improvement. You can see at the top left, the I Love Kenai branding is utilized, and we've heard that that branding is not really hitting home with locals. And we've also heard that it was confusing as to who operates and owns the content on this site. So, if you envision maybe going to it for the first time, it's a little unclear who's running this website. You can also see, when you look at those three buckets, that the Best Place to Alaska tagline is really, is really installed heavily on those. And the best, the best word is very dominant. It's really standing out on this page. And also, some of the images don't feel super local. So, in particular, the image of the woman with the basket with pineapple in it doesn't really particularly look like our markets exactly. And then the image way over to the right, got my rights and left straight, way over to the right is looking like an image from Cooper Landing. So, it's a little unclear if we're talking about Kenai or the Kenai Peninsula. And then here's an example of some of the recent changes that we're making to this site, to show you kind of an example of the direction we're taking things. So, now you can see on the top left, we've just replaced the branding that was there with the City of Kenai branding. So, it's a little clearer to understand that this is a city product that's run by the city. The language has been shifted to be more focused on being accurate and descriptive, and we've moved away from calling it "the best." We're saying, "Here's, here's where you can go to learn about life in Kenai and get a real picture of what it's like. Here's some information about where, where you can work and what the job scene is like in Kenai. And then here's where you can go to learn about what's available to do in our area." And then we also shifted the imagery to be more locally focused and images that are from our area. The same changes have been applied to the social media accounts. So, a little, so there's a, these are screenshots from the Facebook page, but there's also an I Love Kenai Instagram page. And the first iteration of the social media account, when it was first started, were the posts, sometimes they promised or advertised an attraction that was outside of the City of Kenai. And so, it was a little confusing as to whether we were promoting Kenai specifically on this account, or whether we were talking more broadly about the Kenai Peninsula. So, that was kind of where the first iteration went, was it was, it was a little bit glossy. The second iteration was really focused on sharing information about events that were really relevant to locals. And then in this current iteration, and for future posts, we'll feature highlights about activities and itineraries that are attainable in Kenai and are attractive to locals and visitors alike. So, whether you're coming as a visitor or whether you live here, you would hopefully find this information to be enticing about things that are going on here in Kenai. So, we've shifted the tone to a more authentic voice and a more local voice, and we're focused on activities that are available now, making, only making promises we can deliver on today about what's happening in our community. And we're focused on activities that appeal to locals and visitors. In addition to changing the face of what you see on the marketing materials, we felt like we needed to start with a long-term plan to ensure that the city can realistically fund these efforts. The budget for this work needs to be carefully managed to get as much as we can for it. So, we started with a communication plan process, which you can see listed under the tasks there. In the communication plan, we determine the tasks that need to happen now, or immediately, or in the near term, and then thought about tasks that could happen or should happen further down the road. We've also been working on tools, templates, and workflows that allow the city to more effectively manage their communications with locals. And you can see some of those items listed there. So, in the next slides, I'd like to dig in a little more detail about the audiences we'll be reaching out to and what messages we want to share with them. As part of our planning, we defined our audiences for tourism and marketing efforts. When we say "local," we mean Kenai residents and close neighbors like Soldatna or surrounding cities, people that are likely to come to Kenai for dinner, for a library event, or for an art show or a movie. We want to make them aware of what's going on and what's available. When we say "regional," we mean Alaskans within driving distance. So, you can see here, we identified the Greater Kenai Peninsula communities and Anchorage and surrounding areas. So, we want to show the variety of activities and options that are available in Kenai, and just encourage them basically to stay a little longer, maybe make their day trip and do a weekend trip, and just stick around a little bit. When we say "national," we mean travelers from the Lower 48 that are seeking unique experiences in Alaska. We want to encourage them to choose Kenai as a hub or a base for their trip. So, you'll notice on this slide that I have the local and the regional audiences highlighted. So, our plan is to focus on these groups specifically for a few reasons. First, we have a limited budget and time, and we believe that the investment in connecting with the local audience will have the benefit of retaining local spending and growing community pride. For the regional audience, our goal is to promote year-round weekend adventures, day trips for events like sports or arts or culture events that they might be coming to town with, and of course, fishing trips. The timing is very ideal for this, because we know that the Kenai Peninsula Borough and the chambers are working together to build regional marketing and focus on the national audience that you see identified there. So, we can engage with that group and leverage their work to increase awareness of the larger Kenai Peninsula to a national audience, and keep our efforts and dollars focused on local and regional audiences. And also, just a side note, that as part of the other project work that John and I are doing, we're also working with the borough on that effort. So, we're aware of kind of how that is progressing. So, a little bit more about the messaging that we're sculpting, I guess you could say, for these audiences. For the local audience, we're really focused on this idea of Kenai, "This is my Alaska," and really owning the personal stories that people have about their community. So, we're emphasizing community pride, raising awareness of city events and programs, and highlighting Kenai's lifestyle by highlighting local attractions, experiences, and activities. On the regional messaging, we're thinking about Kenai, "This is where we Alaska." So, again, kind of describing for visitors why they would want to come to our Alaska. To the regional audience, we're sharing the story of why we choose to live in Kenai and what people like to do when they're here. So, giving them ideas about that. So, we'll focus on things like, "Kenai has a great weekend getaway for Alaskans year-round. There are things going on here." Talk about how it's a great place to work and start a business, and highlight different short-trip itineraries that encourage adding an overnight to an existing day trip plan. And to be doing this, we're using multiple channels to get the word out. So, for the local audience, we're utilizing the city and chamber calendars to post events on those channels. We're also using the city and chamber social media accounts to post about city and chamber events and limited promotion targeting locals and, and neighbors for key events and programming. We're utilizing the I Love Kenai website and social media to release content, and also taking advantage of different events that are going on, like the kite festival, farmers' markets, and different outdoor festivals that happen during the year. And for the regional audience, we're doing some of, using some of those same tools, but in their case, we're using the social media to post about weekend itineraries. That's kind of one of the themes we're using. For the blogs, we're building on existing content and refreshing that content to align with data about visitor preferences, new opportunities, and search engine optimization keywords, and then also taking advantage of that collaboration we talked about earlier for joint promotion with KPV and the chambers, and that working group for road trip itineraries that feature Kenai as the hub. So, as I wind down this presentation with my last slide here, I wanted to share with you some of the metrics we're using and will be using to track our progress and refine our products. So, for the local audience efforts, we can measure participation at local events, and also take note of increases in community engagement. And we can track social media metrics and track Google Analytics. And for the regional and national audiences, we can take advantage of some of the data that's available from the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District to track bookings and spending. We can monitor the website traffic and growth in social media followers, and track ad success through social media metrics and Google Analytics. And then for, as our, as we go along with the messaging, we can work on refining it by adjusting our messaging and tactics based on the data that we get from, what did I say there? From the tourism, the tourism industry data that's listed above, feedback from tourists, and then also what we hear from residents and city staff. So, with all that said, thanks again for your time, and just wanted to see if you guys have any questions for John and I.
Any questions from the body? Vice Mayor Nexted.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you for your presentation and, and a fresh look at that. And I guess what was resonating in my head a little bit when you were talking about my Alaska, my Kenai is my Alaska and whatnot. I do travel a fair bit, and invariably I run into people that, "I've been to Alaska, and it was such a wonderful place." And turns out, they take the cruise up, the inside passage, and make, maybe make it past Juneau and back. And that's the Alaska that they, they, they think the whole state's that, you know? And of course, it might be lost, you know, that we're talking, but for me, I think that's, that's great that we're talking about, "This is my Alaska," because it is. We're not southeast, you know? And it kind of emphasizes that perhaps to somebody that is looking on a website, that there's more than one Alaska in that respect.
It's a huge, it's a huge state, and making a choice about where you're going to spend your time on that epic vacation is a big process. So, we want them to come here.
Any questions? Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. You said you had some metric tracking, which I'm really a big data guy. I like that. That's really neat. And I know we're early on in this process. Have you seen any insights yet into utilization and how things are going so far? If there's been improvement, or is it? If there's been improvement, or is it too early to tell?
I'll let John take that one. That's his specialty.
It's too early to tell at this point. So we, we have begun the campaign portion just starting in November. Prior to that was research and planning. So at this point, we had pretty static, a static website and fairly static socials for, so we were pretty low. So we'll be able to track that better and, you know, but it gives us a good baseline. We looked back at past, past data, so we've got a good idea of where things have been over the past, you know, few years, and we can see now as we're really starting out what things change. And then the other piece, like the other data piece that is really cool is that KPET data. So I think they're using Datafy. They've got a source where they're able to see actual, like, tracking people's credit card spending, and so they can see who's, how many dollars are coming in and how many people are coming to the, to the area. So we'll be able to really track and get some, like, data around actual spending, which is usually one of the harder points in the tourism and marketing is showing that return on investment. We can show reach and awareness, but we, it's harder to show that final action piece. So that's cool that they're bringing that online, and we can leverage that.
Any questions? Councilor Sonard.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. First of all, thank you for your presentation. I liked it, and I like the tweaks that you have made. I really do. The first one that really caught my eye was when you replaced the "I love Alaska" from the corner to the "City of Kenai" emblem. That was just like, boom, it's, you know, it's there. Yeah, the "I love Kenai," just, I'll be honest, I'm one of those people that if I was guitar string, I'd be totally silent, or tacit, I guess would be the better word. So, thank you. And along those lines, on that same page, when you, you called them buckets, the three buckets at the bottom, I liked the changes. Because using the word "best" repeatedly, I mean, it's one of those words that you can use once to make a really good punch, but if you use it repeatedly, you just look arrogant. And I like what, I like what you did, because it put the focus back on Kenai and what Kenai is. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. And I should also, this is a great moment, to say thank you also to Teri and Christine for spending a lot of time with us in meetings to get these things rolling, because it's been really helpful to have that guidance and insight into what, what we can change, what's kind of working, and so appreciate that teamwork.
And also to Sam at the Chamber, too. She's been very helpful, so.
Further questions? So I'm going to just add, kind of expand on Councilor Daniel's question. So moving forward, you know, our busy tourist time, although we'd like to retract more winter time, you know, tourism here, that summertime obviously is kind of the main tourist season for us. So would we, could we expect a presentation or a look about where we're at as, as far as these matrix next fall? Is that, would that be something we could look forward to?
Yeah, that seems like a, a great time to kind of check in again after, after we've been able to see what's happened in the summer. Yeah.
Okay.
That's great.
Wonderful. Thank you, Inger and John, for presenting for us this evening.
Thanks.
Counsel, next up, we have Item C, which is on Schedule Public Comment, which we haven't on this evening. Next up is Item D, Unscheduled Public Comment. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to address the counsel at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Seeing nobody in chamber or online, we'll move to Item E, Public Hearings. First up, we have Item E1, Ordinance Number 3446-2024, Accepting and Appropriating a Grant from the State of Alaska Food Coalition to the Kenai Senior Center. Pleasure, counsel. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact Ordinance 3446-2024.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Ordinance Number 3446-2024? Seeing nobody in chamber or online, we'll bring you back to counsel. Comments, deliberation, counsel? I would just like to say thank you to the state for the grant for the Alaska Food Coalition to the Kenai Senior Center. I think this will be for shelving, is that right? So help kind of help you, or keep, I mean, you guys do a great job over there, but hopefully it'll prove, help those operations even more. Clerk please call her on.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonard?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Kasana?
Yes.
Councilmember Dotit?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance Number 3446-2024 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we have Item E2, Ordinance Number 3447-2025, Accepting and Appropriating a Grant from the State of Alaska Division of Senior Disability Services to the Kenai Senior Center for Disaster Emergency Planning and Preparation. And just would note that normally this would be on the consent agenda, but I'm presuming that since we have a motion to introduce and then a second reading and a motion for enactment, that there's a time issue with this. So just want to, it's a little bit different than we normally would, would consider this ordinance, so just want to give everybody a heads up on that. And with that, pleasure, counsel. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to introduce Ordinance 3447-2025, Requesting Anomalous Consent.
Second.
Public hearing.
You know, this is okay.
Yeah, unanimous, that's great. Any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, that motion is approved. Next up, we have a motion for a second reading. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for a second reading of Ordinance 3447-2025.
Second.
Requesting Anomalous Consent.
Unanimous consent was requested, is there an objection? Seeing none, that motion carries. And now we have the second reading of the ordinance, which is Ordinance Number 3447-2025, Accepting and Appropriating a Grant from the State of Alaska Division of Senior Disability Services to the Kenai Senior Center for Disaster Emergency Planning and Preparation. Bring us to motion for enactment. Vice Mayor Naxted.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I move to enact Ordinance 3447-2025.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Ordinance Number 3447-2025? Seeing none, and chambers are online, we'll bring you back to counsel for deliberation. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if through the city manager, if the Kathy Romaine might want to speak to this. I think there's some details she might have for us.
Mr. Feebang.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor. I definitely want Kathy to weigh in on this, but I want to just take a second, if I could, to brag a little bit, I think. So this was a grant opportunity that presented itself here late December, and I think Kathy was out of the office kind of unexpectedly, and Red, her administrative staff over there, really, really stepped up and took the time to, to apply for this grant. Red reached out to some other folks here in the city, reached out to our fire chief, who has some, a lot of OEM-type experience and did, has worked with these disaster-type plans in the past. She regressed, she had some assistance from some folks in finance, and Jennifer in finance. And really, what I'm bragging about is how the, the team, the administrative team here at the city kind of rallied together and came and really helped Red. I think she felt really supported in her efforts to put in for this grant, and then was ultimately, you know, successful in getting the grant awarded. So it was just an opportunity to say thanks to Red and to the rest of the folks here in the city that really stepped up to, to assist her, as it was, it was really good to see, and I think it speaks well of our team. But Kathy, if you don't mind, just to talk a little bit about the grant, what it's for, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Vice Mayor Naxted, through city manager, the state, through the Older Americans Act, the Older Americans Act specifically says that each site needs to have site-specific emergency planning procedures. While we have, and that's not something that the state has, has pushed before, they are now, and they, they offered up, this is remaining COVID funds, and they offered this, this last-minute grant, we had 10 days to write it. And so they really came down, and, and I give Red and the team that she worked with credit for this. It was, it was a great grant. Anyway, she, this will be able to, we're, we'll be buying emergency food for seniors, so all of our home-delivered meal clients will have emergency food that they will put away. It's good for six months to a year. That's one thing. We'll be getting, I think, some supplies for our AEDs and before the fire department. That's something that is very costly to our budget if we don't get a grant for that. And the fire department's been, been good in recent years, that we've been able to get grants, but this will help us enormously. Replacing first aid kits around the senior center, which is also, and then professional services to develop this site-specific plan for the senior center. And the city of Kenai, we do have an emergency plan, but not site-specific for the seniors at the senior center. So very good. It's, it's going to be exciting, it's going to be fast. We have six months to spend the money, which is why it was ready and introduced tonight, so.
Thank you, Kathy. Further questions, deliberation? Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you. I appreciate everything that the city manager said about staff and everyone working together, and that's something that I've been, been watching, has been improving. It's, it's been great for the, like, the last, you know, over six years, you know? And it was, it was pretty good before then, but it's, it's been excellent. It's, it's things like that that make these things happen. I think that's, I think that's wonderful, and I do appreciate your staff, Red, which he, which he did. I was quite curious about the, I don't recall where our purchasing ends or begins on, on the professional services through the city manager. Is that something that's going to come back to council, or is that a small enough amount where you can do an RFP?
Mr. Feebang.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, through the mayor. We will be doing, you know, following our normal procurement procedures, and I don't know exactly off the top of my head what we expect that contract to be, but if it does exceed $35,000, it will be back before council for award. But we're going to follow our normal procurement procedures and spending this grant out.
Further deliberation? Yeah, and I'll just probably echo Vice Mayor Naxted's comments. It's great to see, and when you have an employee that will take the initiative to do that and understand that she has your support to do that, that's a great way to, a sign of a healthy department right there, so thank you. Any further questions, comments, deliberation? Seeing none, court please call her on.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonard?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Kasana?
Yes.
Councilmember Dotit?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance Number 3447-2025 is adopted, is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we are on Item E3, Resolution Number 2025-01, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into a Restaurant Concession Agreement for the Kenai Municipal Airport. Pleasure, counsel. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-01, Requesting Anomalous Consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2025-01? The first resolution of the new year, by the way, by the number 01. Nobody in chamber or online? Bring it back to counsel, comments from counsel? Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you. I absolutely support this. Of course, it's good to have a restaurant in the, in the, in the airport, and we have two, two interested parties here. I do have, I do have one question in the contract, just to curiosity how it works, and under Article 5 Utilities, I think it's, there's a new paragraph in there, but it says who's responsible for electric heat and other utilities. The city is, for the most part, but during other outright, I was wondering if, how, how we, how we charge for utilities otherwise that the tenant is using, you know, for electric and heat. I'd have to go back to that in our packet, it's like on page, page 17, I think. I'm not, I'm not there right now. And I apologize to city manager, because I didn't ask the question in advance, gave them a heads up. 1617. If I might, it says, it's under section, it's in Section B on that page. "Utilities: City shall pay for garbage removal and electrical utilities, including heat and normal air conditioning during operating hours of the terminal. The city shall pay for water and sewer." Okay, that's pretty clear. "All other utilities and services, including gas," which I think is heat, it could be cooking, "telephone, communications, internet cable, and other utilities and services incidental to the concessionaire's business, will be operated and maintained at the concessionaire's sole expense." I was just wondering if we have a separate meter for the oven or something.
Mr. Feebang.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Naxted, yes, there is a separate gas meter that serves the, the restaurant. And, but it's not, you know, like you said, the, the heat for the facility is a single heat source, so that, that meter is just serving, I think, just their cooking and things like that in the kitchen. So, you know, and then as far as the other data and telecommunications and things, we do have a comm room there that, that all of the telcos or all of the providers are able to bring their services into, and then each tenant can, can purchase those services and give them out to the individual, different, different parts of, or different areas in the airport there. So that, that's how that works.
Thank you very much.
And just for folks listening that might be curious of when we get the, when a new restaurant would be in there and open, it looks like March 1st is the date that they would take the, or move into the place, is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so this, this agreement starts March 1st, that's when they will take over the lease. We anticipate them opening for business by April 1st, give them time to get in there and get moved in, do any different types of improvements they want, may want to do in the area. And we did, you know, at the time we issued the RFP, it was our anticipation, we would have the current tenant in there through February, March timeframe. They, they chose not to do that. We did extend the opportunity to this individual to come in early. However, I believe, I believe her current business is under another lease that, that she didn't want to try to carry too. So we're definitely going to honor what was in the RFP, and they take over March 1st. We're expecting them to be likely open by April 1st or very early in April.
Thank you. Further questions, comments, deliberation? Seeing none, I don't think unanimous consent was requested. Oh, it was, okay, unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025-01 is adopted. That brings us to Item E4, Resolution Number 2025-02, Authorizing a Budget Transfer in the Municipal Roadway Improvements Capital Project Fund of Remaining Balances from Completed Projects to a New Project for City Dock Flow Replacement and Concrete Ramp Repairs. Pleasure, counsel. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-02, Requesting Anomalous Consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2025-02? Nobody online or in chambers, we'll bring you back to counsel. Comments from deliberation from counsel? Vice Mayor Naxted?
Perhaps a couple. I was, I was curious of, maybe a couple of things. When will the work be completed? Is this something that we're hoping to have done early this year? The ramp and the, and the docks?
Mr. Feebang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to let Lee speak, he's kind of putting the schedule together on this.
Thank you. So the plan right now is to get the float purchase moving here within the next month out to bid, so we can start getting that process moving and replacing all the floats that we have out at the dock. The concrete work is a little more up in the air. I think it's going to be tough to do anything prior to I think it's gonna be tough to do anything prior to dip netting season at this point. Especially, we wanna bid the project out and see what the floats cost before we can see how much funds we have left to do with concrete work. So, we'll probably evaluate that this spring, once things break up. And it's possible we could get it this fall, but it might be next spring.
One more thing is, hopefully the funds here, I think it's kind of a newer project, the funds that we're allocating are gonna be sufficient. But I kinda wanted to remind council and administration that, you know, recently we accepted $70,000 in fisheries disaster funds, which maybe that has been, it's kind of going somewhere else, but it would seem like this might be appropriate place for some of those funds to go to if we need to up. Things always cost more than we anticipate, it seems like these days.
Mr. Feeney.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also, Vice Mayor Naxted, there are, help correct me here, Lee, I think we have about $150,000. It's also been appropriated previously for some float replacements. So, we do have some local funds that are already for that purpose as well. You know, if I could, I just wanna take a minute, because I think it's important to know the story a little bit behind this money. So, this grant started life as a $1.9 million grant from the state of Alaska to provide an alternative beach access for South Beach. And this was to alleviate some impacts that were, we were having over there as a result of the personal use fishery and folks accessing that beach by an old section line easement, which was like right next to some property owners. We constructed that alternate access. We were successful in subsequently vacating that section line easement, because we provided equal or better access to the beach with our new road and fixed that problem. Subsequent to that, we were able to get the use of the funds, with the remaining funds expanded. We expanded it to include the city's North Beach, which allowed us to construct vault restrooms. One is on South Beach and at least two on North Beach. We constructed some new vault restrooms. We built some new pew fishery shacks with it to serve both the North and South Beach. And then we provide, we constructed a bypass lane on South Spruce for pew fishery operations on the North Beach. This last legislative session, with the support and assistance of Senator Bjorkman and Representative Ruffridge, we were able to again get the grant language amended now to include the city dock. That's what's facilitating this new opportunity to utilize the remaining $355,000 that we have, where we think it's best to provide the greatest impact here for the city, but also for the pew fishery participants, which was kind of the initial thrust of this grant. So, we, one thing I do wanna draw a little bit of attention to, make sure council's aware, is there, at one point, we had allocated $150,000 to construct a bathroom facility at the Little League Fields. I can tell you, just judging by what the borough is now spending on a similar type structure over at the high school, $150,000, we'd be lucky if we could get the design done for a new restroom there. So, not only are we taking whatever funds are available from these completed projects, but we're also redirecting that $150,000 that was previously for that bathroom over to this, because I don't think the $355,000 is anywhere near sufficient to build the restroom that was envisioned for Kenai Little League. So, if that's a priority, we can certainly look at other opportunities and funding sources down the road to do that work, but this will reallocate those funds.
Further comments, questions, deliberation? And Alex, I'm kinda keeping an eye on the board there, and so is Shelley, so, but if we miss you, just go ahead and chime in, okay? Any other discussion? Seeing none, unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025-02 is adopted. That brings us to Resolution Number 2025-03, amending the authorized staffing table by adding a part-time administrative assistant, one position to the police department. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor, next.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-03.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2025-03? Seeing nobody in chamber or online, bring it back to council for deliberation? Vice Mayor, next.
Requesting unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested.
You can always ask another question. I was wondering what this position, what skill set, maybe it's in the packet, I didn't see it actually, what the, for the new, for the new person, if you're, what the, what the skill set is that you're looking for exactly for this part-time position?
Chief Ross?
Vice Mayor, through the city manager, this is an administrative assistant one position, which is the lowest level of administrative assistant in the city. There's a one, two, and a three. So, it's a basic skill set, it would work under the direction of the current evidence custodian. The majority of the work would be electronic transfer of data, like video files and uploading files to the Department of Law, uploading reports. So, it wouldn't be very complex work, just tedious in front of a computer, the majority of it.
And it looks like, right now, there's money to fund this department, fund this position in FY '25, and then FY '26, that will cost would be $21,045?
Mayor, through the city manager, that is correct. We've had some vacancies for police officers in the police budget, so there is available funding in the budget for this year without appropriating any money. But that was the estimate that the finance department gave to continue it in the budget in the next fiscal year, was $21,040 or something like that.
Okay, so presumably this would be included in the next, in our next budget? Mr. Feeney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I do anticipate, I don't see this need going away. This is, you know, the state, you know, the Department of Law there has changed the way they accept evidence from the police department. And it's become, it's placed an enormous burden on the current admin over there to the point where this is virtually her entire job now. And so, it's just, as things change, sometimes they proverbially roll downhill, and we're sitting at the bottom in this case. But, you know, it's understandable what the state's doing, but it also shifted some of that burden. They used to accept all of this evidence, I think, on a single DVD or something, where they would then disperse it amongst multiple cases, where now individual files are having to be sent for everything and labeled and things like that. So, much more time-consuming on our behalf.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025-03 is adopted. That brings us to Resolution Number 2025-04, adopting goals to guide the preparation of the fiscal year 2026 annual budget. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor, next.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-04.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2025-04? I would just note that there was, one of the laydowns we had for public comment was related to this resolution. Seeing no comment from online or in chambers, bring it back to council. Deliberation from council?
Requesting unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025-04 is adopted. Brings us to item E7, Resolution Number 2025-05, authorizing contract orders to supply Microsoft Enterprise agreements. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor, next.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-05, requesting unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2025-05? Seeing nobody in chamber or online, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025-05 is adopted. Brings us to Resolution Number 2025-06, adopting the city's capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2026 through 2030. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor, next.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-06.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2025-06? Seeing nobody online or in chambers, bring it back to council. Was unanimous consent? Okay. Deliberation, comments from council? Councilmember, next.
Thank you, Mayor. In the packet, at the end, there's a letter from Kathy Romaine on behalf of the Council on Aging, and requesting that a feasibility study be done, basically, or discussed research at adding senior housing. I think it's on page, and I haven't gone to it, 110 in our packet. It's down there. But I'm thinking we ought to discuss if there's something we would even, we wanna include on there or not. The numbers that, from the last Council on Aging meeting, which was last week, was a feasibility study, we could expect to be somewhere between $250,000 to $300,000, and that doesn't even get anything really started. But perhaps, you know, it could be something that's placed on there, you know, and as a, on a, like a wish list, but if money becomes available. But I thought perhaps the city manager, I think he's been aware of this for some time, is a possibility coming before us tonight, if he might have an opinion or some wisdom for us.
Mr. Feeney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor, next. I know this has been being discussed, this has been a priority of the Council on Aging. I thought it was appropriate that they bring that, their priority, to this body, and we decide, for you folks to decide if that is now a city priority. Like Councilmember Naxted alluded to, one option I think is out there is that, you know, if directed by council, we could include in the capital plan a project to do a feasibility study for constructing a new senior housing facility. Now, that study is pretty expansive. This is very, this would be similar to the study that was performed in 1988 before construction of the current facility. And that study would do everything from examine the current market need, how much senior housing is needed in this area, what are the costs of that senior housing, to, you know, potentially do some site analysis, some programming to determine how many units, what size units, how much common area, what those common areas, you know, requirements are, the full gamut. And then that would end with a schematic design, level design, from an architect, which, you know, technically is not, not to diminish the value, but they're roughly like crayon drawings. I mean, they're just rough drawings of what a facility could look like. Certainly well, well short of any sort of real design or anything that you could even move towards construction with. You know, that study in 1988, $160,000 to $180,000, what did the city pay? You know, current estimate, $250,000 to $300,000. I don't know what council's appetite is. Other options I think we could do, we could move into this even more slowly. We could look to perform a market analysis and determine what the need is for senior housing. You know, what type of senior housing is projected to be the need? Is that, is it, you know, financially assisted senior housing where the greatest demand is? Or, you know, what, exactly what type of demand? I talked to Kenai, I reached out to Kenai Peninsula Housing Initiative today. You know, this is a group that we've been working with, I think, as a city to, you know, we've provided land for their projects to construct both low-income and senior housing here within the city. And some of the studies, some of the work that they do when they're seeking grant funding to construct those projects, is do some of this work. And talking with their director today, you know, she estimated we could probably get a, like a market analysis done on demand and things for about $15,000. So, you know, there's a variety of different ways that we can proceed with this, but I thought it was important to get it before council. It's not something we had in the original capital plan as a priority of the city. And determine if it true rises to that level and we wanna add it to the plan, or if council wants to direct the administration, we can look at, you know, other approaches to starting to work towards determining if there's a need. I think a full-blown feasibility study at this point is, that's a lot of effort to put in. And, you know, I think you're looking at significant construction costs that will never be built without some significant grants to the city, too. So, it's all the pleasure, council. We're just here to support and wanna make sure that what the commission wanted to bring forward got before you.
With that information, any thoughts from council, deliberation, discussion? Councilmember Askin?
I was wondering, is there a pretty long waiting list currently for Vintage Point?
Mr. Feeney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Askin, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, 116 is the number I think I heard yesterday?
Thank you.
That's the number of people, right? Not to lengthen time, word wants, right?
That's the number of individuals currently on the waitlist. Now, Kathy, could you speak a little bit to the waitlist? Like how many, like when you get an opening, how deep into that list do you typically go till you fill it?
Absolutely. Currently, the waitlist, as soon as we fill an apartment right now, we add another person. So, we recently just filled three people, three apartments vacated, and we got four more people on the waitlist. So, it's staying consistently at that. So, the waitlist has changed throughout the years. So, and how you can stay on the waitlist, who wants to be on it? And about seven years ago, I talked with council about changing that, because I didn't feel like it gave us a real expectation or a realistic view of how many people are actually searching and would like an apartment today. They could stay on it, a lot of people used it as an insurance policy. So, the folks that are on that waitlist, they can turn it down one time. If they turn it down twice, they go off of the waitlist. And that has changed. We have very few of the original people who would just stay on it and stay on it and stay on it. We've had folks just move in the end of December, and she waited two years on the waitlist for the smallest one-bedroom that we had. They weren't waiting for a larger one. She got the smallest one-bedroom that we had, and she waited two years for that.
But I guess what you're saying is that if we went out tomorrow and built 116 units, we probably wouldn't fill them up. Would that be an accurate statement?
Correct. I think that it, you know, in reading over the feasibility study from when it was first, this first stunt was done, they built 40 units and anticipated, you know, for future expectations. I think it's, it's, there's question on, do we need two-bedroom? We have a lot of demand for two-bedroom. But again, one-bedroom is the one that, two-bedroom, you don't, the income-producing level isn't as much on a two-bedroom as it is on the average one. So, if you have, meaning if you have two or three one-bedrooms, they're gonna bring more income than one two-bedroom apartment is. And so, I think, could we fill 40 units today? I asked Red that today, Red's in charge of our waitlist. And I said, so you think we could fill 40 units today? And she says, we could fill them yesterday. So, she's very, she feels that, I mean, we're taking names every week and the application. And I think that is, a lot of it is, there is, there are a lot of seniors moving up to be with their kids who are staying here in Kenai. And we're seeing an incredible amount of folks coming up, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Dothet?
Yes, I'll try to see if you can hear me, but I think it would be good, at least, to put it out on the list, maybe a year or two out. We can always move it up or down, but at least keep it out there so it's in our vision in the future to possibly do something like this. And at least that might give us an opportunity to start looking for grants or keep. grants or keep our ears to the ground to see if we, possibility to see some kind of a grant. But I wouldn't like to just see us do nothing on this. I think at least maybe putting it on the, our list out a year or two, just like we've got that park, you know, we'd all love to see that park come to fruition, but we're just waiting on, on funds. But I think at least having it on, out there and in our vision for next year or the year after, we can always move it up or down as we see fit. But I think at least putting it on the list would be important.
Are you talking about the actual, the feasibility, the, the
Yeah.
Market analysis? I mean, there's several different components.
I would be talking about the full feasibility study, is what I would think.
Okay. Because one of, one of the things I think we need to recognize as well is that we've got the, you know, the bluff erosion project that's going to be happening here this summer. That's one, and, you know, this would be something, and nothing does not say you can't walk and chew gum at the same time and do some of the preliminary stuff, but which might be appropriate to move it out to a certain point. So, I guess my question to administration is, is how would that, how would we facilitate that to, as we are right now considering this capital improvement plan? Do you have a suggestion? Mr. Yvain?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, you know, by simple motion to amend the current plan to include, you know, a feasibility study at whatever dollar amount in which fiscal year. And in the, I think it would be a general fund, in, within the general fund section of the plan, but when we could then incorporate that in and, you know, I think accomplish what Councilmember Dotha was alluding to.
I guess that's where I was going with that. I don't know what a, a number, appropriate number would be. And did you have any idea what that looked like?
We're guessing between 250,000 and 300,000 for an effort to do a full feasibility and programming for a facility.
And was there a year that you can suggest that might fit better into this plan? I know I'm throwing a lot at you on the fly, but.
I'm going to ask Leely, do you have any preference where it fits best? And I'd have one other question, too, if council would like to portray that now as requiring grant funds to move forward with, or if they're, if they would like to depict that as a, as a general fund expenditure at that time. Because we typically put a number of projects in here that, like the one Councilmember Dotha alluded to, the Old Town Park, Old Town, Kenai Park redevelopment, you know, that, that one is really grant-dependent. So, that's another option, too, that we can signify that, you know, it's definitely a priority, but that triggers the administration to really start beating the bushes and try to find some funds available to fund it, too.
Okay, I'm just trying. Oh, sorry. I just, I think that's what I would like to allude to, is basically, maybe a couple of years from now, but at least that would give us time to start looking for grants and just, we could put a note on there that, at least keep an eye out for grants. Maybe we might see a last-minute grant pop up with the increase for the need for senior housing. We might start seeing some of these pop up. But I'd like to see it on there, maybe in a couple of years. At least we can move it forward if we see something sooner, but at least keep it in our forefront.
So, that's about all the info. I'm trying to give the, the body enough information to make a, you know, a reasonable motion here, if that's the case. Councilmember, because I can see.
I have a couple, couple questions and comments, and hopefully this will help inform my decision, I guess. One, as I apologize for maybe a very dumb question, but maybe a brief explanation on the difference between the Kenai Senior Center and the private retirement homes that are expanding in the local area. And that's just a, I don't know. So, that would be my first question, is maybe the, what is the simple difference between the two?
Mr. Yvain.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll let Kathy weigh on this one, too. But one thing to know about the, so Vintage Point is the city's senior housing facility. It is not the Kenai Senior Center. The Senior Center is where we provide meals and activities for local seniors. Okay, two totally different things. The Vintage Point and that facility is a 40-unit independent living apartment complex. There are no subsidized housing units in there. It is all market rate rents charged to the tenants within that facility, one and two bedrooms. So, you know, comparing that to other facilities here, like, like Kenai Peninsula Housing Initiative facilities, they have some senior housing facilities down Reedout Avenue here in town and looking to build more. Some of those are financially assisted units, low-income type units for seniors, and things like that. So, you know, that's what sets our, our facility apart and from what else is out there in the local community. Kathy, you want to add anything to that?
I can. Councilmember Casena through the city manager. So, as, as the city manager explained, Vintage Point is an independent living senior housing. So, KPHA, who is now building several four-plexes and has, has received property from the city down Reedout, those are also independent living senior housing. It depends on, there's Woodridge in Kenai, there is Chuda House north of Kenai. Those are all, again, independent living senior housing, completely different than assisted living that we have here in Kenai as well. So, the difference being is Vintage Point is not based on income. Vintage Point for tenants is strictly based on what that apartment rents for, starts about 1,100 up to 1,300. So, the apartment rents for that, which shows, those are 40 units. It also shows that, for instance, a senior with, say, an average income of 5,000 a year, or 5,000 a month, would not want to go to a low-income housing to get, they're going to pay 30% of their income, you know, or they, they, they would not qualify in a low-income housing. So, it provides the alternative. And we are, I do not, I do not know, some of our other apartment complexes in Kenai do take low-income housing. They also have just regular apartments that, that people can rent as well, for the amount of bluff.
Did that answer your question, Councilmember?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I didn't know more about it. Another question I had was, does the city have any data to show kind of population trends for the area? You know, do we, do we see more folks who would fall under senior housing in, in the area, or is that number declining over time? Do we?
Mr. Yvain.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Casena, it's, we look at census-type data and, you know, just like the rest of the Kenai Peninsula borough, the senior population in the borough has been growing. I think it's projected to continue to grow. So, but as far as our own specific data, no, that, that's part of what some of this, these studies would, would lay out for you as well, too.
Okay, Councilmember Dotha.
And I'd just like to add that I think the big thing about Vintage Point is that its correlation to the Senior Center makes it very sought-after also. Seniors don't have to drive anywhere to go get meals and visit with their friends. And so, the combination of having that all-in-one facility makes it a very sought-after location for seniors.
Further discussion? Councilmember Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I, too, would be in support of adding something on here, but for, to look at this. But my question is, would it make any sense to postpone so we can find a better dollar amount and time to put this on? Or should we just consider this now, is my question for potentially city manager? I don't know how much information we need to throw it on there.
Well, I haven't, I haven't thought on it. But go ahead, Council, or Mr. Yvain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would caution council against postponing this, just because, you know, part of the reason we timed this, this time of year, is that the state's capsis system is now open. As the new legislative session starts, that's our opportunity to submit our capital priorities to the legislature for consideration in, in the upcoming capital budget. So, I don't want to delay that. I think we can, if, you know, if this is being projected out, you know, say fiscal '28 or something like that, you know, we can certainly work on refining it between now and then, but we can certainly get something on the books. And if, if, pleasure of council, we can take a brief at ease, and I can work with the attorney clerk and get the proper amendment to, to do this and have somebody able to read it into the record if you would like here this evening.
So, that, that's what I was going to say. I mean, in my, to move in for the, because I had thought about that, too, as well. But I do understand about this one, once we approve this, we're going to look towards putting it in the capsis, our administration law, that we can either just take no action now and put it in a year from now, and there, that could happen, or, as, as Mr. Yvain said, take it at ease and then make the amendment. So, I mean, those are, I think, the two choices we kind of have out there right now. So, Vice Mayor Naxted.
I think the amendment might be fairly straightforward. I mean, we could take an ease if, if it's not appropriate. But, you know, I, but before we dive into that, I mean, I, I have a lot of faith in the private enterprise out there and, and the momentum that that's been moving forward. And I, and I, my, my personal thought sitting here tonight is that we're not going to have the funds from anywhere to, to build this thing, to go through all of that process. The state's not going to give us any money anytime soon, you know. I'm not sure. It seems like the funding isn't, isn't realistic. I think the idea is good. So, you know, putting it on, on our, let's say, fiscal year '29 list with, with no funds and it's going to be grant fund, funded, it's, it, it keeps it there, so it's not forgotten about. Because I think it is a good idea. It's just, you know, my sense is it's probably not going to be very feasible, so.
Yeah, I agree. Because there's two components. One is what we're just looking at right now is the feasibility study. But then beyond that, there would be design and construction moving forward. But I don't have, I don't have a objection to taking a brief at ease and voting it up and down right now. That's, okay. Let's take a, probably get time to take a 10-minute at ease anyway. Back on the record, and just to recap, we were looking at generating a amendment to Resolution Number 2025-06, which is our capital improvement plan to include in a certain year out, a money for feasibility study that would be grant funded. So with that, I think we've got a motion ready to be made. Vice Mayor Nexton.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for the clerk and the city attorney and manager. I move to amend the fiscal year 26 through 30 CIP plan to include a general fund project for a feasibility study on a senior housing, on senior housing in the amount of $300,000 for fiscal year 29, to be funded with $200,000 in grants and $100,000 in grant funds, general funds, requesting unanimous consent.
Sir, second.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion. unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, the amendment carries, so now we have before us Resolution Number 2025-06 as amended. Further discussion?
Requesting unanimous consent.
Thank you. unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection to unanimous consent to approve Resolution Number, or to adopt Resolution Number 2025-06 as amended? Seeing no objection, that is so moved and adopted. That brings us, and before we go on to our next item, which is Resolution, which is E9, Resolution Number 2025-07, I was made aware that we need to actually backtrack to our previous resolution, because there was a number that needed to be amended on that, which is Resolution Number 2025-05. Council, or Vice Mayor Nexton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to reconsider Resolution 2025-05, authorizing a contract award to supply Microsoft enterprise agreements. Requesting unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, we now have Resolution Number, reconsideration of Resolution Number 2025-05 before us. Vice Mayor Nexton.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason for the reconsideration is there was a, a number error in the, in the, in the resolution, in the laydown, and I'm, am moving to replace the, the amount, $33,759.92 with $36,375.92 throughout the resolution, requesting unanimous consent.
Sir, second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion. Before we do that, I'd like to just reopen, since we are changing this to any, to the public, so is there anybody that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2025-05 that was just amended? Seeing nobody online or in chambers, we'll bring you back to council. Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? For discussion, I guess, rather than a motion. Seeing none, unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? We now have before us, that the motion carries, we now have before us Resolution Number 2025-05 as amended.
Requesting unanimous consent.
Sir, second to approve.
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025-05 is adopted, as amended, is adopted. I think with that, we can move on to Resolution Number 2025-07, requesting the governor of the state of Alaska designate by proclamation the area of the upper Kukkina Eastside Sandnet Fishery as an area impacted by an economic disaster in 2024 and supporting a recovery plan. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Nexton.
Would Councilmember Raskin prefer to do this?
Oh, sorry, Councilman Raskin.
Sure, I move we adopt Resolution Number 2025-07 and request unanimous consent.
Second.
Before we do that and open up for public comment, I would just, I'd like to pass the gavel to the Vice Mayor at this time, and has to be recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, I have the gavel.
So it, I would like to point out that I do have a conflict of interest with this resolution, and so my wife and I, and this happens recent, I guess more than frequently lately, but we, my wife and I operate a east side sand net operation on Upper Kukkina, or Upper K Beach, we have for 35 years, and if this, this, although if this, we pass this resolution, it wasn't, wouldn't give me money directly, it's the first step towards providing economic relief for a season that we had that was, that is being requested to be declared a disaster, so wanted to declare that conflict of interest, that will not allow me to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution 2025-07? Is there somebody online?
Yes, there are, so, hold on, it's been a while since I had to do this. I'm going to ask Andy Hall to unmute himself and...
Okay, Mr. Hall, if you're, if you're able, if you want to speak to this resolution, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So my name is Andy Hall, I'm the president of the Kenai Peninsula Fishermen's Association. I've been involved in the fishery, well, I'm a lifelong Alaskan, I've been involved in the fishery since 1982. Strangely, I'm still considered a newcomer by some, but I would just like to be brief and say thank you to Councilmember Askin for sponsoring this resolution, and thank you to the council for supporting the past five disaster declarations, and we're asking you to do it again, because these disasters are just becoming all too familiar, and I don't see an end to them, other than the current state of the king salmon and the management of the fishery. These funds are vital to keeping our fishermen active and hopefully in place when this disaster passes. Despite all of your support, beginning in 2018, we still haven't seen a penny. We're hoping the process is in place, the applications have been submitted, and we hope to see money this, this year for those 2018 and 2020. So I would ask that you support us, and I, again, thank you, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall. Is there anybody, anyone from council that may have any questions, Mr. Hall, if you're available? Anyone? Thank you, Mr. Hall, we don't seem to have any questions here. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else?
Yes, now I will ask Eric's phone to unmute.
I didn't hear the name.
Eric's phone.
Yeah, hi, my name is, oh, got me there. Hi, my name is Eric Nice, I'm also a lifelong Alaskan, been sending any with my family on Salamantoff since, well, the 80s, and unfortunately, we're not able to do that anymore, but I just wanted to come on tonight and thank Councilmember Askin for sponsoring this resolution. I'd also like to thank the city council for your support in the last five disaster declarations that have been declared. This is now our sixth in the past seven years. Our fisheries really experienced a pretty massive decline to the point of 99% ex vessel loss at this point. This is clearly a disaster, and I just wanted to call in tonight to thank you for your support.
Thank you for that. Is there anybody from council that may have any questions, Eric? Thank you very much, we have no questions. Madam Clerk, we have another?
There are no other hands raised online.
Okay, no, no further comments. Electronically, is there anybody here from, in, in the room that would, that has any questions? Comments? Seeing none, that brings us back to, to council. Councilmember Askin?
This, thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Nexton. This resolution requests the governor proclaim a local economic disaster for the area affected by the almost complete closure of the east side net fishery in 2024, resulting in approximately 99% reduction in traditional harvest by that fishery. The borough and city of Saldatna have also passed similar resolutions supporting this, and your considerations appreciated.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from council? Seeing none.
Requesting unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection to unanimous consent? Okay, seeing none, Resolution 2025-07 passes, and I pass the gavel back to the mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor Nexton. With that, that brings us to item G1, ordinance number 3445-2024, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the Kenai City Municipal Roadway Improvement Capital Project Funds to transfer residual balance from completed projects back to their original funding sources, and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the Kenai City Water and Sewer, Public Safety and Airport Improvements Capital Project Funds to fully fund projects approved in the FY 2025 budget. And there's a note that on 12/18, this item was postponed to this meeting. Is there a motion to enact on the floor?
There is.
So, there's a motion to enact on the floor. I guess I'll reopen for public hearing at this time. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3445-2024? Seeing nobody in chamber or online, and I will point out that there is a memorandum in our packet with a suggested motion to amend Section 2. Vice Mayor Nexton.
Thank you, Mayor. Reading the memo, I move to amend Section 2 by replacing $9,610.65 with $29,999.35 throughout this section, requesting unanimous consent.
Are you a discussion on the motion? Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? We now have ordinance number 3445-2024 as amended. Before us, further discussion? Seeing, seeing no, there's no other discussion. Clerk, please call the room.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Kessena?
Yes.
Councilmember Dohgett? Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nexton?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3445-2024 is enacted as amended.
Thank you. With that, we have her to item H7, which is a discussion action item, we're scheduling a board of adjustment meeting for the purpose of approving hearing minutes, and just real briefly, is that what happens is when we have a board of adjustment meeting, there's minutes that are generated from that, from that meeting, and sometimes we go for long times between our board of adjustment, maybe sometimes years, and we actually might have different members of the body by the time that we have the board of adjustment minutes that are approved at the board of adjustment here, hearings. So what the clerk has asked that we do here is schedule a quick meeting to approve those minutes, so we have the same people involved in expression every's mind, and that makes those accurate. So in order to do that, I would suggest that, what about half an hour, what would be what we need?
It'll probably only take about 10 minutes for the meeting, but if you want to schedule it half an hour before a regular meeting, that would accommodate well.
That's what I was gonna suggest, if there's any, no objection, that we schedule it a half an hour before our next meeting, which is whatever date that...
February 5th.
February 5th. So, is there, is there any objection to that? So, is there, is there any objection to that? And I don't think we need a motion, do we? So, we, no. So, with that, we'll make our, make our board of adjustment meeting at 5:30 PM on the 5th, February 5th. And I don't see a handout from Alex, so I'm thinking he's good with that as well.
Yes, that works.
Okay. With that, we'll go to commission committee, or commission report, sorry. We have first up, council on aging.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, in the packet is a, the council on aging commission's 2024 annual, annual report for, for your review. Just wanted to point that out, that it, that it's in there. The, the council on aging met on January 9th and they had a quick meeting and a work session, so I'll just kind of combine them a little bit together because the meeting was quite short and the work session went a little longer. They had election of officers. They elected Rachel Craig as the chair and Jim Glendening as, as the vice chair. And they also pointed out that on January 31st, it'll be volunteer appreciation at the senior center. I think all the council was, was invited and I think, you know, so please RSVP to that. I intend to go. Then they went into their work session where they worked on their 2025 work plan. They had three primary items. One was a volunteer program, intergenerational enrichment, which might be probably more in-depth than I know, but it, it could be seniors reading to, to children at the, at the elementary schools or at the library and that kind of stuff and just that kind of, that kind of stuff. And then the second one was emergency planning. And then the third one, we just spent quite a while talking about the senior housing expansion. So, that's, that's on their list. So, they'll be reminding us of that. Their, their next meeting will be 13th of February.
Thank you. Airport Commission?
I covered, I covered on that one, that one too. Airport Commission also met on, on January 9th here in council chambers. They had the election of chair and vice chair. Linda Fieken was reelected as chair. Paul Manilga was reelected as, as the vice chair. They, they discussed, they recommended the council approve the airport commission 2025 annual work plan. And those three items were taxiway Sierra, which we do hear about quite a bit. That taxiway would go from the south end of the runway over toward the float pond and open up that area. The second item was to develop lease lots that, that's at, in that area near the float pond. And the third item is the support and work with the airport master plan that's, that's beginning right now. And just to, not part of their meeting, but they, they did note that the, the next meeting, there's a meeting Tuesday, February 4th to discuss the master plan, airport master plan. And if anybody's interested in the airport, they may want to, to attend that. The next item was recommending to council to approve an amendment to municipal code allowing airports as a principal permitted use in the airport light industrial zone. That'll be coming to us and it's just a change in the land use table. It seems like a logical one. And so, the airport doesn't have to get a conditional use permit to have an airport on the airport. We'll leave it at that. The, the next item was to approve, airport commission recommended approving the, the 2024 annual report for submission to city council. So, we'll be getting, getting that. And the last item was recommending council adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to enter into a restaurant concession agreement for the Kenai Municipal Airport. And that's some, an item that we had this evening. And their next meeting is scheduled for February 13th, 2025. That's all I have.
Thank you. Harbor Commission?
We did not have a meeting and our next meeting is February 10th.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission?
I covered that one as well and they did not have a quorum, so they did not have a meeting. Their next meeting is February 6th.
Very good. And we do have new members for that commission coming that we on, onboarded today, so that will help. Planning and zoning commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. They, their first order of business was they elected, reelected Joe Halsted as chair and Jeff Twain as vice chair. There was about 40 minutes of unscheduled public comment regarding the Aspen Living Center. The main complaint was with the traffic changes, there's, traffic has increased significantly on Pine and Ponderosa and, which includes trucks for unloading materials and stuff. And the planning director said he would have more information and asked them to come back on the February 12th meeting so that they could review everything about the, the problems with that. Then they considered a preliminary plat from Barber Heights for a replat to the, our, the rural residential district. And they also recommended the city council enact amending the Kenai Municipal Code for airports. And they reviewed their 24, 25 goals and their next meeting is January 22nd.
Very good. Thank you. Beautification Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Beautification Commission meeting was moved to February 11th.
Very good. Thank you. Under report of the mayor, we do have several items here that of interest. So, on, okay, so on December 28th, the city of Saldatna, city of Kenai Chamber sponsored an event for Kristen Faulkner over at the Kenai, Kenai Landing, or Canary Lodge, rather. Now, if you don't recognize that name, she won two gold medals. She's from Homer. Her dad is John Faulkner, who owns the Kenai Landing. And she actually grew up spending her summers here in Kenai as she worked on, on the landing property that her dad had developed there. And so, the city of Kenai and the city of Saldatna always had this somewhat joint proclamation to declare December 28th, 2024 is Kristen Faulkner Day in both the city of Kenai and the city of Saldatna. And it was a very nice event. She brought her gold medals with her, so everybody got to, you know, hold them and take pictures with her. And she's an amazing accomplishment. She didn't start actually biking until 2017. Her gold medals were, one was in the, the women's road race and they actually showed the video clip of her crossing the finish line under the Eiffel Tower. And you couldn't see anybody behind her, but it was neat getting her take on how she never even looked back because she was so worried that someone might be there and totally dominated. And then she also won another gold medal with the, the track cycling pursuit, which is where they have the four bikes on the track, the slanted track, and they go around, they kind of switch spots, really neat race there. But it was a fun night and evening and to, to see her, she's very humble and neat to see her interact with all the folks and the kids. So, it was well, really fun event. And then today I did go over to the Kenai Visitor Center because there was a, a new exhibit over there. So, they've got a, a gal that they brought on with some, we appropriated some money for the, for the senior center to help kind of do, curate the artifacts that they have in there and do a display. Well, I remember, and I said this before that, well, back when I first come to council, that we had spent some money to sort of inventory those things, but apparently though, you know, it's, it's time, that's been a while ago now, almost 15 years, that there was some, a need to, you know, catalog these better, make them more accessible. There was things that were, they have better enclosures for the items that are over there. There's about 4,000 items in the collection over there. So, the gal's name, she's an anthropologist and, you know, so this is a really neat thing for us to have, for her to come down here and spend the time to do this. And her name is Danielle Hamm, I think it is. But her, what she did is she's got an exhibit over there that has what it's called early Kenai. And I asked what that is. It was before contact or pre-contact, which is meaning before the Europeans came, which is about the time Captain Cook sailed up Kukkinkin. And so, they'll be expanding on those exhibits and be, they will be giving talks on those as well. So, I know Samantha was going to be here, but she wasn't feeling very good today. So, I just wanted to, oh, is she onboard? Oh, okay. And if I missed anything, Samantha, feel free to chime in at the very end here. And then the last thing I wanted to spring up is that, and, and it's sort of, you know, you don't really think about it this time of year, but with the wildfires that are raging in California, you know, it doesn't, it sort of spawns that question like, okay, where, where are we at as a community? But not only that, but where are we at as a, as a landowner or a property owner within the city of Kenai? And I'm going to ask Terry on, in his report to give us a quick overview of where we are on our spruce bark beetle mitigation, because those are things that we've been doing for a number of years here. But I wanted to say, as I, as I looked out, I had a project in mind at my house of doing some mitigation because I've got, I had some beautiful spruce trees that are now, that were dead. And I was planning on starting those around March or April. And then I looked out, we have no snow. So, it's not a bad time and it's a good time to get a burn permit to actually start, if you have the time, to do the mitigation on your property because the city doesn't have the funds to go in and mitigate people's private property. So, now's a good time to think about it. I know winter time, you don't sort of think about fires, but certainly just sort of a messaging out to the community here that if you do have private property within the city and there's a bunch of dead fuel, that's all fuel there. And part of the problem that they had in California was the amount of fuel that was stored and not cleared. So, you know, the best thing we can do now is to help ourselves. So, if we do have a summer of maybe a higher risk, you know, we, we can sleep a little bit better at night. So, just wanted to throw that out there to get people to think about it. Because I can tell you, it's like, you know, if, if something were to happen to fire, it's like falling out of a boat. That's the last time, you don't have much time to grab a life preserver at that point if you're not wearing one already, so. And with that, we'll go to administrative reports and city manager, Mr. Eubank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, a few things to report for you here. One, this is some positive news for city of Kenai employees, actually for, for most public employees in the state of Alaska. There's been some recent legislation at, at the national level and that legislation eliminated the windfall elimination provisions of social security and the government pension offset of social security. Now, what that is, is that when, when folks work or people work for government employers sometimes and don't pay into the social security system, it results for their, for a portion of their working career, their social security can be reduced in the future because they weren't contributing all the time into the system. This elimination, I think the stats that I saw, you know, will affect about 15,000 Alaskans. So, that's something I think that is good news for city employees that have prior social security experience or, or time in the systems. Right now, I will tell you, the, the state is experiencing some difficulty with the PERS, the Public Employees Retirement System reporting portal that we utilize to transmit payroll data and remit PERS contributions to the state. The city has not been able to contribute or report to the state since early November. The state had a apparent breach or, I don't know that, I, I don't want to characterize it as a breach. They, they saw suspicious activity, they shut the site down, they took it offline, they determined that no data was, was accessed or lost. So, I don't know that they officially had a breach. But their choice to, to combat this was rather than rebuild the system and bring it back up as it currently was, was to continue a project they had to migrate to some new servers into a cloud environment. And unfortunately, what that means is, you know, for, for defined benefit retirees, it has virtually no impact. The state is, has not received millions of dollars that should be being invested into the retirement system as a result of this. But more importantly, for tier four employees in the defined, or yeah, in the defined contribution system, the money being withheld out of their paychecks, their required 8% and the city's required 5% match is not being posited into their individual retirement accounts and invested. The state is working on this. The two largest employers in the state are unimpacted, being the state of Alaska and the municipality of Anchorage because they report using a different system than the rest of us. But I got a second update here. This week, it looks like they're, they're expecting that system, they're in final testing of, of the new system. They expect it to be up by the end of the month and they'll be scheduling us municipalities to upload information so that they don't get it all uploaded at once. But right now, I can tell you, the city of Kenai has probably in excess of $200,000 of employees' money that should be in their individual retirement accounts that we haven't been able to transmit. So, I'm glad the state's working hard to, to get that resolved. On a staffing update, unfortunately firefighter Mike Oden, he's been a city of Kenai firefighter for almost 10 years now, submitted his resignation. Mike's going to be pursuing a promotional opportunity here with one of the other local departments. So, unfortunately, Mike's going to move on. I wish him the best of luck. We did welcome one new police officer, Mr. Lucas Michael. He started earlier this month and he'll be heading to Sitka for a, the Public Safety Academy later this month, three months, four month academy chief? Four month academy. So, once he returns, he'll go through field training and about this time next year, he'll be ready to, ready to turn loose and be on the street by himself. So, wish him the best of luck and welcome him to the city. We are still recruiting for one more police officer and the utility form imposition, which was extended. Other updates, Public Works Director Frye and myself met with members of the Kenai City Union Tribe to talk about Fish Pass's culverts and a notice of funding opportunity that's presented itself. And we are working, you'll, you'll hear more about this tonight when we, or tomorrow night when we meet with the tribe in joint work session there. But looks like this, we're, we're collaborating on a grant application where the city will, the funding is available on two sides. There's a non-trivial side and there's a tribal side. We're going to apply on the non-trivial side as the city, the tribe's going to make application on the tribal side. And what's really interesting about this funding opportunity is that it's, the, the dollar amounts are pretty significant. So, on our side, the minimum grant application is $750,000 with a maximum award of up to $8 million with expected awards between $3 and $5 million. So, it, I think, we think it's a really good opportunity potentially for us to address up to four culverts in the Cemetery Creek, Donaim Creek drainage there and, and get a lot of work done. So, looking forward to that. Our application's due February 15th. The tribes would be due a couple of weeks after that. So, a lot of work to do between now and then and partnering with the tribe and US Fish and Wildlife on that. So, trying to work on that. Mayor mentioned it, I was, I too was over at the Visitor Center, Visitor and Cultural Center today for the grand reopening. That's something you guys will get to see tomorrow night as part of that joint work session. It's, it's really nice to see some new life being breathed into that, the cultural side there. And I think a lot of artifact, artifacts that haven't seen the light of day in quite a while will be brought out for people to come in and see and really encourage the public to get out and, and check that out because there's going to be new exhibits every month. This isn't going to be just a one-time thing, so. Yesterday, closed, RFPs were due for the public safety building programming study that we're, we've commissioned. We received six responses. So, members of that evaluation committee are going to have their work cut out for them. Lots of reading on that one. So, they'll be working through that. Council will see a, a recommendation to award, I believe, here. recommendation to award, I believe, here in one of the next couple of meetings. And but that's exciting. That's a lot of interest. And hopefully, we get some really good RFPs. I want to inform council that came to our attention, some of the pickleballers over at the rec center talked to us, and they didn't think that the markings on the floor were proper. And Parks and Rec Director Best did look into it. He reached out to the contractor who did the floor. They sent a representative down, and some of those markings are off, some by, you know, a few inches here, a few inches there, but they're definitely not correct. That contractor is going to stand by their work. They're going to come back. They're going to sand down the floor, redo all the markings at no cost to the city. But what that means, and Tyler's trying to work with them on scheduling, trying to get this scheduled before their summer busy season, when they get into all the schools to do this work. We're tentatively scheduling this right now for, to commence on April 12th. That's after city league basketball and after, after prom. The gym will be closed for a two to three week period, and the entire facility will likely be closed for a week just because of the fumes when they refinish that floor again. So we can expect another closure there, when council will know that's coming. And then the last thing, I'll give that update that the mayor requested there on some of our tree mitigation program here at the city. So the city of Kenai was very fortunate. We received, I believe, a $385,000 grant from federal government to cut trees, hazard trees in the city, most of these Spruce Park beetle trees. We entered into a memorandum of agreement with the state of Alaska. That grant from the federal government required a 50% match. We entered into an agreement with state of Alaska, and the state, through a memorandum of agreement, provided us an additional $385,000 for tree cutting and as match. We just amended and extended those agreements with the state here, I believe in December. And to date, the city's done two phases of tree cutting. We did the drainage through municipal park and through the drainage up around Forest, the Forest Drive area, up and through there in Woodland subdivision. Phase two was the next drainage to the, that would be the east, the west, which would be the No Name Creek up through around the airport. I think we're substantially complete on most of that work.
It's supposed to be completed end of April, I believe, phase two.
Okay. And we're, we're working towards issuance of another, for phase three, soliciting contractors for phase three. We'll also say, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, the borough has been very gracious. The borough's got a lot of money to do this work with, too. They did quite a bit of money, or quite a bit of work here in the city. If you've seen some of the work that took place between Lot and Drive and the Spur Highway, that area through there, that was cleared, that was by borough contract. So we're having to rework our phase three, because it included us doing a lot of that work. But we're really focused on, and what our mitigation plan is, is to provide, you know, fire breaks and things in case we had a serious wildfire that we could help, you know, mitigate or try to maybe stop the spread. But we've got quite a bit more work to do and some funding available, and we're going to continue cutting trees until we run out of money. You are right, we have plenty of public land to be able to do that cutting on. We haven't been able to branch that off into private property as of yet. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on City Manager? Vice Mayor Nixon.
On the tree mitigation, I, in my walks, I noticed right across from the high school or thereabouts, and maybe borough property where they were working, there's quite a berm of, if you call it a berm, of trees held up and some kind of activity down there. I was not sure if that was, maybe that's just a private activity, or that's something the borough is doing. Are you aware of? I had the impression that there was some milling happening because of the shed in there, but I, you can't see through it. It's well screened, whatever it is. It may have just become apparent because of all the trees that have been removed.
Are you talking across the Spur Highway from the high school on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, across the Spur Highway.
Yeah, so that's definitely a borough parcel. Well, there's two parcels along there. The parcel to the east is owned by the Alaska Mental Health Trust. And then the next, the parcel to the west is a borough parcel that they did do. That was one of their mitigation projects as well. I'm not sure about milling and stuff. I think that would be on the Mental Health Trust parcel down there. And I'm not, I don't know what's going on on that one, but I know the borough did the one to the west.
Any questions, any other questions on the City Manager? Seeing none. Before, I was notified that the new gal over there at the visitor center who's doing the exhibits, her name is Danielle Lopez Stamm. I think I said Hamm, but that's what happens when I try to do things on town. So I just apologize for that, and wanted to correct the record. With that, we'll go to our City Attorney, Mr. Blum.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, members of council. I don't have anything to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the City Attorney? Seeing none. We'll go to our City Clerk, Ms. Sander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. City Council members, I have nothing to report available for questions.
Any questions of the City Clerk? Seeing none. We'll go to additional public comment. Is there anybody from the general public like to address the council at this time? Ms. Nelson.
Am I on? Okay. Mary Nelson, Kenai Arts Center. I have not been spending much time at the Arts Center. I've been busy coughing for the past month at least, and not sleeping a whole lot either. But the show that's up right now is a kinetic kind of show, and it's small but mighty. It's one of those shows, it's the first time we've hit a show like that, and it's one of those that's going to spawn ideas for the next time. And lots of interesting shows this year, and of course, the big student show coming along in the spring, and that's always one of the, you know, fills the whole place up. And Clay on Display and various other shows that take place every year and some every so often. So take a look at the card and pin it on your refrigerator or wherever. We have escaped having a leaky roof for quite a number of years, but we did have a little bit of leakage, which is usually right near the potter's room door, but in the main gallery. And it's some, some years it's been significant, and there's been a bubble there that just holds water in the ceiling somehow, some way, and it will dump at some point. Well, that, we just had a little bit of that this year. So that's kind of like we've missed a bullet for several years, and that's the good news. It's one of those things to keep on our list. And also, Terry, I don't know if City Manager, I don't know if you've talked with Sandra Lewis or not regarding the money from the Clarice Kip estate, but we do have $5,000 from that estate, and it has been settled, so we can deal with it. And I don't know if that conversation's been had with you or not. No? So anyhow, that can, I think that can go to the roof issues, to this, as far as what's the most depressing, that is probably the most pressing. So just something to put in your hip pocket and to deal with it. And Sandy, Sandra Lewis is the board president, I'm not, which is nice. And to have that conversation in the near future and move along on that before we do have something happen again. I don't think I have anything else at the moment. Any questions from anybody?
Any questions of Ms. Nelson? Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, I've been on the Visitor Center Board in the past for a number of years and dealt with the refurbishing of stuff that's been stored in the back a number of times, including when we went through the parsonage for the church and had a joint situation with them and dealt with a lot of the artwork that was, I can't say jointly used, but, you know, a lot of old things were uncovered and things had been framed and hidden and then uncovered. So I'm glad to see that this is the current incarnation of discovering what needs to be dealt with again, and that's, that's a good thing. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody else from the general public like to address the council at this time? Seeing nobody online or in chambers. We'll go to additional council comments. Start with Councilor Goffin.
Not a whole lot. Had a good trip, got back, lost my voice, but all doctored along. Hopefully be able to come to tomorrow night's meeting. But thanks for everybody for covering for me in my meetings, and hopefully I'll be able to be there next time, for sure.
All right, thank you. Student Representative Tanner.
Thank you. For Connections Homeschool, on January 22nd, they'll be hosting their annual spelling bee for third to eighth graders. For Kenai Central High School, on January the 15th is a girls' and boys' varsity basketball match versus Kotseview. On January 16th and 17th is junior varsity hockey at Colony High and Palmer High School, and varsity hockey at Houston High School and Palmer High School. From January 17th through 18th is boys' varsity basketball at Barrow High School, and girls JV and varsity basketball at Grace Christian High School and Houston High School. On January 20th is the boys' and girls' freshman basketball versus Nikiski High. And on January 21st is boys' and girls' junior varsity and varsity basketball versus Homer High School, and varsity hockey at Homer High. On January 22nd is the boys' and girls' varsity hockey against, we're not sure yet where they're going to go for that. On January 23 is the boys' and girls' varsity basketball versus Eagle River High School, and the Al Howard Basketball Tournament, that's an annual tournament. On January 24 is boys' and girls' varsity and JV and freshman basketball versus Soldatna High School and Seward High School, as well as boys' varsity versus Soldatna High School and Cook Inlet Academy, and girls' varsity basketball versus West Valley High School. On January 28 is the boys' and girls' junior varsity and freshman basketball versus Soldatna High School, and on January 30th and February 1st is the boys' and girls' varsity and junior varsity basketball matches versus Homer High School. A lot of these events are posted on the schedule, so they could be rescheduled or canceled due to weather.
Thank you. Councilor Sonar.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I would just like to thank Red for all of her effort and work in securing that grant for the Senior Center. I think it's pretty awesome. And just, just a word of caution to everybody, be careful out on this ice. Hopefully, the snow tonight might help, but I know we have a kind of a treacherous footing in winter out there. So just be careful.
It's almost like the snow makes it even a little worse sometimes, although we're not skim ice. Councilor Raskin.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I too would like to thank Red and the staff that assisted her in getting that grant. That was pretty cool to get it in 10 days. I attended the ribbon cutting today at the Chamber. I had had the occasion to go there right after they had gotten that changed, and it's, it's a really nice exhibit now. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Daniel.
Glad to be back from our trip. And a lot, but I'm really looking forward to our work session tomorrow night. Not tonight, it'd be a long night tomorrow night with the Kanai Tzian tribe. That's going to be really, really good.
Councilor Cassina.
Thank you. I'd like to request that I can go before student rep Tanner from now on. He always just has such thorough reports. Not much has been happening for me outside of hockey, lots and lots of hockey. It's been nice to see Mr. Mayor back on the bench. I have photos of that, if anyone would like to see that. And then just highlight that next weekend, January 23rd through the 26th, is the KPHA Peninsula Winter Games Hockey Tournament. I think it's a good highlight of youth sports in the central peninsula area. Director Best's work maintaining that facility and its usage, but also just a good highlight of regional tourism that comes pouring in for a tournament of that size. So if you get a chance, I'd recommend stopping by to see that. It's fun to watch the kids play, and yeah, it's a good time.
You know, Lee Monas, his daughter's an excellent goaltender, by the way. Shout out to Amber. Vice Mayor Nixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I came to realize that pickleball's a more serious business than I thought, till, you know. But any rate, I think it's pretty cool that we have a contract that's going to come back and make those changes. It doesn't sound too egregious, but then again, I don't know anything about pickleball, so I guess it's, it's a good thing that they're going to do that. I too went to the Visitor Center Cultural Exhibit presentation today, and it was, it was very nice. Enjoyed that. And look forward to every month as they go, kind of like the Arts Center. And everything changes, you know, so it's kind of a cool thing. And I do look forward to tomorrow night's joint meeting with the Kanai Tzian tribe. That's something I look forward to every year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor, next item is item AM, Executive Session. Vice Mayor Nixon.
Thank you, Mayor. A move to enter into Executive Session for contract renewal discussion and negotiation for a city clerk pursuant to Alaska Statute 4462310C12 may be a subject that tends to prejudice the reputation and character of the city clerk, and is a matter of which the immediate knowledge may have an adverse effect upon the finances of the city. The Executive Session will include Mayor Gabriel, city council members, and city clerk Michelle Sander. Requesting and is consent?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? You know, it's concession was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none. With that, we will convene into Executive Session.